City Council meeting for January and March the 29th. Call to order, real call please.
Councilman Farnum?
Here.
Councilman Davis?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Curtis?
Here.
Mayor Brown?
Here.
Councilman Rice?
Here.
Councilman Liberty?
Councilman Connolly?
Here.
Councilman Corrin?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis, would you lead us in invocation?
I ask that you join me in your faith. Lord God, we come to you this evening. God, we thank you for this opportunity to serve our city. God, we ask that you be with us as we make decisions. Lord, always let us be humble in decision-making and in our positions. And God, we ask you to be with those people that are suffering at this time, and, Lord, that people might put their arms around them and give them courage and give them strength. God, we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ms. Corrin, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would like to make a motion. We're going to close session for according to six, one, zero, dash, zero, two, one, one, three, and nine. Do I have a second on that?
I'll say it.
Real call please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
All the elected officials, please retire to the chamber room. Before we go to the consent agenda, there is a request to pull a particular item off of the agenda for tonight. Let's see. Do we want to read this whole thing, or do we want to discuss taking out that something on the cell tower off the agenda for tonight?
I would need a motion in the second, then council.
Make a motion.
What we, I got a second down here.
Real call.
I think it's not confused.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're, so what's our discussion?
That you want to take the cell phone ordinance off of the agenda.
What's the reasoning?
I don't know.
It is required that parties seeking change in land usage in writing a proposal change to the landowners for the 185 feet of said property. This property has not complied with that requirement of notification, even though they have made two attempts to notifications. The record of deeds in Plaskett County is the holder of that record of ownership, not a third party. Please refer to the list of notified parties with requests of change. Triple K Incorporated and Missouri Corp. is not listed and has not been properly identified. Triple K Inc. owns the land within the required notification area, and it was a request to remove this ordinance until the proper procedures are followed.
I got a question.
And the motion is second?
I got a question. So what is proper notification?
That they, Keith, you can probably explain that. Proper notification for landowners with 185 feet of any property change.
Okay, so I want to say I remember a statement Mr. Pritchard was notified, right?
I was notified that the corporation, which has legal standing just like a human person, was never notified. It is the land of, my owner of that corporation requires Postal Service to their post office a box that's reported on the deed. My understanding, I'm not an attorney.
Okay, and the only reason I ask that is because the signature block says you represent that organization as a secretary.
Correct.
So are you a part of the organization, or are you representing yourself?
Oh.
So which one are we talking to?
Which one are you talking to right now?
Yeah, am I talking to the organization, or am I talking to you as a landowner? Because if you're a landowner, your property doesn't lie within that 185 feet.
No.
So, so am I talking to the organization?
Yes.
So who has the organization been notified?
No, not, well, not, by my understanding, by proper notification, by U.S. Postal Service and prepaid postal envelope, mail to the record address on the deed of trust does not make it apply.
Okay, so it needs to be, it needs to be, and just listen to him, I'm not ignoring you, but, so it needs to be notified directly by mail to that organization?
I think that's required by statutes, my understanding, yeah. I'm not an attorney, that's just the way it's always been done by me.
So how is you notified?
By Facebook. I look at Facebook, I follow your record notifications by Facebook.
So he's wanting a paper.
I know. I'm a citizen of the, and just follow the city and much of it.
So Keith, what you're basically saying, the corporation needs a paper chase, basically, the mail.
I think that's what the statute requires.
Okay, okay, I understand that.
It was out, but you haven't been notified.
Yeah, I understand. I was under the impression that, that you, you was notified.
He was never notified in writing, as Keith Pritchard.
Okay, okay, so you wasn't never notified in writing by name?
I, Keith, you asked the question, and I'm a representative, Keith Pritchard does not live within 185 feet of the property.
Okay, all right.
Triple K Inc., which is a lead, a corporation, a C corporation, duly licensed in the state of Missouri, has not received legal notice, according to the statute.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify. It makes sense now. To me, when I read, when I look at this and I see a signature block that says secretary, I'm like, I have had secretaries before, and they communicate with me.
I'm a corporate secretary of corporations.
Okay, I understand.
When he came before, he was doing citizens comments before.
Right, okay, and that's what I, I was kind of confused on that part. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion in the second. Real call. This is to remove this ordinance off the agenda for tonight.
The agenda item.
Agenda item.
Yes.
Are we able to say a thing before we go to the vote?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I guess I, I'm not quite clear. So basically, we sent our notification based off the county assessor's information. It didn't have the property, it's showing it right there. So Mr. Pritchard came, spoke, and the second meeting that we had, and then we went back and notified based off the information we got from the assessor, from Mr. Pritchard. It still didn't show anything, and I think John even reached out, just, all right, takes our last scheduled meeting, that got postponed, it should be in our forum, and still didn't show the ownership. So I think we've done everything we can based on the information that the jurisdiction has, and Mr. Pritchard has been aware of this as a secretary of that business, and has come to here to be in between the road board and utility board, if there was. So I think, you know, we've done everything we can based on information, and we would like to proceed tonight.
Mr. Pritchard?
I don't respond personally, I don't want to speak, you know.
Well, you want to come up here where you can see also, if you'd like?
I mean, I can see him, I just don't want to speak. I would say I have attended as a citizen, and you may have went to the assessor's records. The recorder of deeds is who transfers property within the state of Missouri. If you do not file a deed of trust, a warrant of deed, dealing with the recorder of deeds, it is not counted, period, does not transfer. The assessor's office, or a tax collector's office, any of those would be ancillary offices. We've been on record since the mid-'80s as the owner of the property. It's no secret, it's not shown this adhesment. We own it, we've owned it for decades, and we, you can almost spit from the property and our property, we weren't properly notified. I don't, it doesn't bother me at all if you vote up or down, vote on it tonight, it's going to have to come to a conclusion at some point, but the applicant did not comply with the notification standards, whether they notified me on the sidewalk, or they notified me on Facebook, or they notified me in the courthouse as a person, they did not notify the legal entity which owns the property, which duly filed in the circuit clerk recorder of deeds office in Plaskett County. That's it. And I'm fine for it to go forward, you can go forward, we can discuss, you can vote, we'll move on, they'll either build a tower, or they want that location, or they'll move somewhere else and build a tower. I'm not in a fight with it, with the landlord, or the developers, I'm a capitalist, I'm all for development, I just oppose cell towers and residential subdivisions. And as a developer of subdivisions, that's my saying, that's all there is to it, that's my, that's my opposition.
I understand you say you, you're not ambivalent, ambivalent either way, but if the statute of the state of Missouri had not been followed, does that leave the city in a, in a legal position?
I don't, I don't believe statutes follow the corporation. The owner of the land be whoever it is, which happens to be Triple K Inc., has not been duly notified, and it's recorded in the courthouse with the recorder of deeds in Plaskett County, has been for decades. Anybody that cared to search very hard could have found it. I mean, this is a big corporation, they, they have, you know, horsepower to do it if they chose to do it, and it, I'm sorry, it wasn't done, and it wasn't done. Again, I have no objection to the votes, no, not at all, and you can resolve a matter for their company and the other parties, whatever.
Perhaps we should get hold of-
I'm not trying to create enemies or anything else. As a developer of residential subdivisions, I don't believe cell towers belong in a residential subdivision. That's my position, and that's the only position.
Perhaps we ought to get hold of our city attorney and get a clarification if we have followed the state statutes, or are we open for any type of outside delegation if we did not follow the state statutes?
John, do you know why there would be a discrepancy with the assessor and not getting that information?
Discrepancies happen time to time on the GIS, this isn't the only one that's currently there, or has ever been there. I know when we reviewed ourselves as to why it didn't come back, and if you just stop, you know, with the assessor's office at the GIS level, you're going to get, return the same list that was provided to us by them, and the same property owners. And you won't get that today, unfortunately, it was, you know, corrected after this list was created. The, when the assessor becomes aware of errors or mistakes in, you know, in the GIS system, they go in and they update that later on the GIS to, you know, correct it, any mistake they find, but, you know, this, in this particular case, as the city's stance would be, these contact lists are created by the person who is applying for this permit, and the city doesn't create those for this exact reason, you know, whether it's, you know, you accidentally forget to put one on the list, or whatever the case, the city doesn't want to bear the responsibility of notifying everybody on every permit and researching those documents, that is why it's passed down to the person requesting the permit. But again, to answer your question, man, it's not, it's not unusual to find errors within any county's GIS system, whether it be, you know, Plaskett, Phelps, or in any county, they exist.
After, between the first and second planning zoning meetings, the first one being-
No member?
Was anyone, and Mr. Pritchard came in and complained about it, after that, that he had not been notified, and so they rescheduled a second planning, so was a letter sent to Keith, Mr. Pritchard, or anyone else?
So I can't verify if a letter was sent or not, and to whom. I can verify the properties that they list as within 185 feet. That doesn't mean, they could have, maybe Jason, or Paul, or Kirk could answer that question. You can send letters to anyone, you can cast a broader net. 185 is the minimum, and we ask for those property owners within 185 feet. So I know at a minimum standard that these property owners must receive a letter, but sometimes people outside that 185 feet are notified for whatever reason as well.
I got a question. The letters that were sent, were they return receipt requests?
I don't, no, we don't-
So you don't actually have a list of certificates?
We don't send them, all right, they're not certified as far as, as that, we don't verify, I think we send the, a letter, a letter mailed as a letter received.
And I presume this was advertised in Dixon Page?
Yes.
Was the notice posted anywhere in the public domain, like a post office, or anywhere, a library?
Our bulletin board.
Just a little more here?
Right.
All right, we're back to the question. We had a motion in the second to remove this from the, this ordinance from the agenda tonight, and we had some discussion. It appears without legal counsel hitter to tell us it's yea or nay that this is not quite meeting the state statutes. Now, I'll have a real call then, let the council decide.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
I'm voting for yes to take it off, or no not.
Yes, to take it off.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
That being made change, I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as now approved.
Take that motion.
Second.
Curtis, real call.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Any citizens' comment? Special guest, Mr. Bassett.
My name is Charles Bassett.
Stop right up here, we'd like to see you.
Okay, all right. My name is Charles Bassett, I'm currently serving as the Eastern District Commissioner of Plaskett County, of which your fine city falls within our district, and as commissioners, we're tasked with the duty of maintaining roads outside of the city, and shortly after I became a commissioner, it was very aware to me that we lacked the necessary funding to adequately take care of the roads outside of the city's jurisdiction. And so Mr. Jarrett and I put together a plan to put a half a cent sales tax on the ballot next week to be- ballot next week, to be added to our road and bridge funding. And if the voters approve that, why, over the next five years, our intention is to remove road and bridge tax off personal property, not real property, but personal property. And I'm here tonight to solicit your support for this measure. Not everyone wants to live in the city, those who want to live out in the country, it's my goal to keep those roads maintained, so that we keep them coming into our cities to shop. That's, that's my intention, and I just can't do it on the current funding level that I have. There hasn't been an increase in road and bridge funding, I suppose Councilman Farnum could, could relate to this, but for over twenty years, as far as we know, there hasn't been an increase in, in funding, and so, with the way prices are escalating, for, for everything that we touch, we desperately need the voters to pass this, and would solicit the city's support in this. I hope you have in front of you the proposal, there are two proposals presented on the ballot from the county. And the other one is the use tax, which just brings us in line with what I think you're already collecting, a use tax, and St. Roberts is collecting one, the state's collecting one, but the county isn't. And so if you, if the voters pass it, it will bring us in line with that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address those.
I have another one for Charles. With the increase in the gas tax that went into effect, did MODOC give you many extra money in your cart monies?
We haven't got a penny yet.
Is that my understanding?
That's still in litigation. I understand there's been several courts filing, filed against the tax, and then there's also a group out trying to get it back on the ballot again. So, until those items are all cleared up, but yes, council money, if it did pass, and it does stand in time, we will get some additional revenue.
I didn't know if they had a formal figured out how much they'd raise your cart monies or not, so.
That hasn't been determined yet, but we haven't seen a penny of it yet. And of course, there's also the refund provision on that tax, and in, so, we won't know until the years went by and they see if it stands, if it gets to stand constitutionally. We won't know for a year how many people asked for their money back, and I don't see any way they can disperse into that money until the year is passed, and everyone has a chance to ask for a refund at once, why?
My understanding is that's got to be through their tax filing, state tax filing, they'll have to have their receipts through you.
Yeah, but I don't know what all, we don't know yet.
I know the county group needs help, needs the money.
We do, desperately.
And just the roads and the bridges also.
Yes, this is for roads and bridges both. I identified forty-eight low water crossings last year that need, dire need of repair, I sure did. Anyone else have a question?
Isn't there supposed to be a bill introduced to actually do away with that taxes, that fuel tax, that fuel tax increase? I thought I'd read some with it.
There's, there's people wanting to get it back on the ballot again, there's people want the legislator to deal with it, there's, there's people filing lawsuits to get it back in the courts again, to declare it unconstitutional, so. So in the meantime, we want to do something, Clinton and I do, and we're going to ask the voters to help us. We thought that the sales tax was the least painful way to go, I personally, I oppose taxes around.
I know that.
I do, I do, I just do. But we looked, and, and we would have to exponentially increase property tax, and I just don't think that's palatable at all, it's not to me, and I don't think it is to the voters. So, trying to address it, we thought that sales tax was the best way for us to approach it.
Well, the county citizens have been pretty good, but we supported our law enforcement taxes several years ago, so I think they realize the need to improve what we have.
Mm-hmm, and keep what we have, you know, I don't want people moving to Leclae County, or Phelps County, or some other county, because our county roads are bad, let's keep them here so they can shop here, and invest their money here.
And fish here.
You betcha, you betcha, that works for me.
What sold me is you said it hadn't been raised in twenty years, what was fuel prices twenty years ago?
Well, what was the price of rock twenty years ago?
That's right, that's right.
What was the, and, and I'd like to get our wage scale in line with, with the area, so we can attract the kind of people we need, the professionalism we need, and, and be able to do that, and we just can't under the current system. Right now, I am about, on my district, I'm about four employees short, but if I hire them, I can't buy material for them to work with, so I'm kind of in a catch-22, you know, so. We know what to do, and we know how to do it, we just need the resources to do it with. Any other questions for me? Just please tell your neighbors, you all are in positions of influence, just please tell your neighbors, we desperately need this. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Second special guest, Mr. Paul Celios, Fortune and Wildness, do you have any other comments for us at the city council tonight?
They may not hear you.
Is he here this?
They may not have heard you.
You might have to turn on the lights.
If, if I could, Mayor, Mayor of the council, my name is Curtis Holland, I'm an attorney, outside legal counsel to the Rising Wireless, and it was a little bit of a challenge hearing what was said earlier in the evening about the, the notice issue. And, and I understand now, however, that you all voted to remove the, the ordinance that you could consider for approving the item from the agenda, so there's no action that would be taken tonight, as I understand it, notwithstanding that the gentleman there who, who speaks to or indicates that, that notice wasn't properly given, is in fact in the room, and my understanding is, whatever entity that he represents, I guess I would ask the question, was he the party to whom the notice would have been given? If, if the notice was supposed to be given to this entity that he claims? I, I'm a little curious as to why or how come we continue to keep the hearing because of an allegation that notice wasn't properly provided yet, the gentleman who would receive the notice is in fact in the room, and has been attending his meetings. So, I, I don't know that we can clear that up tonight. I think I heard that the city's legal counsel was not present, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, I, I think probably given the circumstances, I guess I'd ask you, it doesn't seem like it would be worthwhile to make the presentation to you tonight as to our application, but I would prefer to you, if you want to hear it, we're certainly here to talk to it, but I don't know that we're, you're in a position to give a full discussion or, or decision tonight, apparently you're not, so. I guess I would prefer to you as to how you would like to proceed.
Well, I believe this can be brought up at the next city council meeting, at that time, any questions on the legality can be, can be resolved.
Okay, well, then I appreciate that, and certainly that's, that makes some sense, and so, so we need to decide what, what's the next meeting we would go to, and, and if there's a notice issue, have that corrected, or if there's not a notice issue, have that determined. And I apologize if there was any fault on our, our side for anything, but do appreciate your, your hearing, hearing us tonight, and look forward to coming back and presenting you the, the full case itself, and hopefully you can support our application, so.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
My question is going to be, do we have to have another public hearing? Yes. So, I mean, they might need to know for the next planning and zoning, I'm assuming that's going to be a public hearing.
We won't be able to, we don't have enough time to hold for next month and a few months after, because we don't have enough time to publicize it.
Must be fifteen days.
Fifteen days. Well, you might get with, with John and our council, and we'll find the best way to expedite your, your desires, see if it meets with the city's thoughts.
I'm sure I couldn't hear very well.
I said, we, I guess the council can get with our city manager, and we can find what's the best way to resolve the issues, to make it easy for you to present what you need be done.
Okay, so, yes, I understand after this, we will meet with the city manager and the city's legal department, or legal counsel, and then hopefully get a path forward here.
Sure.
I mean, this is, this is, this is, I mean, I probably, I know it's frustrating for you, it's obviously frustrating for us, we've been at this for six months to a year now, it seems like, but, and that can't be heard, so, we will, we will visit with the city manager, and then try to get forward, or move forward on a docket, a new docket for you, for which, so I appreciate it, Tom, thank you.
And I just want to clarify one more thing, as far as the notice goes, we were told at that first city council meeting that Mr. Pritchard was the owner of the property, we've got the address for that, and we provided that back in our resubmission for notice. So the notice went to Mr. Pritchard on the information provided for planning, and then the assessor for getting, getting his notification address.
Mr. Pritchard doesn't own the property, Triple K Incorporated, a legal entity within the state reserve?
Understood, understood, Mr. Pritchard came to the meetings, said he wasn't notified about it, again, when shown on GIS, we were told Mr. Pritchard owned the property, we got Mr. Pritchard's contact information, and we provided that with the resubmission, and that, because it does not show up on the county GIS segment, and, and the assessor wasn't notified, so, that's the information we would get, that's why we provided it back in our submission, so that's why Mr. Pritchard was sent a notice instead of the, with the Triple K.
As I recall, in that initial meeting, and Mr. Pritchard came as a citizen of the city, his comments was he didn't really feel that a cell tower was a proper place in a residential section, so he wasn't representing Triple K, he was a citizen in that area, concerned about a cell tower in a residential area. That is correct.
And I think there was also something about not being notified in the meeting, and that's what sent us to go back to the incident.
That's, that's my understanding as well, and it still stands that way today, the corporation owns the property, has not received legal, legal notice, I can retain counsel as well, we can have the conversation, I don't think that's necessary, just send it up, send it, the recorder of deeds has the information, it's been there, I'll, I'll help you even more. Islandwood subdivision, that's number three.
It's on the, it's on the website now, and I guess so, to confirm that they have the correct information for you now, I have pulled it up here. It's a little bit down. So the address for the Triple K Inc. shows us 21355 Reporter Road, was that what it said?
Correct, 65583.
Yep.
Thank you.
And is there a, attention to?
No, it's not required.
Anything else, council? Board Commission Liaison reports, park board, there was no meeting, but we have the pleasure of appointing Randy Brown to the Waynesville Park Board. Welcome back, I wish we had more citizens that would step up to volunteer to do things that Randy's going to jump into, he's had some good history in the past, but he's going to service well, so if you'll come forward, we're going to...
Mayor, I, I need a second.
Oh, I have a motion, I seek a motion to nominate Randy Brown for park board. Amanda, Mr. Wilson, vote.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Okay.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Absolutely.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Randy, come on up, I'm going to give this to you.
You're going to require a solemn dance, you know.
And an expression of long speech.
What for? Yeah. Come on, round the way. Congratulations, well, uh... I think the picture should be in front of the clock, set exactly at that same time.
Standing committee reports, utilities, Councilman Connolly?
Our regular meetings were held, everybody was present, Compton Rice, anyway, Compton Rice made the motion to approve the previous minutes, we had a conversation with Mr. Soko by Zoom concerning the cell tower, they showed a slideshow on how the cell tower business works, claimed, stated, there was, they were, the Horizon people stated that they wanted to work with and meet questions with the city. We also, Mr. Doyle updated, gave us an update on the sanitation, trash pickup collection, and we asked for bids for, to provide that service to the city of Waynesville, those bids are due to City Hall next Monday at five, no later than next Monday at five, yeah. And the bids will be opened on the fifth, our regular utility committee meeting. Got an update on the sewer rate, and Mr. Doyle gave us all kinds of information on it, but basically what we need to come, we have, we have an ordinance called for a five percent increase, and there'll be a three-year schedule, so three years from now, we're on the utility committee, we'll have, we'll have a chance to, to raise it again. It's kind, it's kind of like a glass, it's full of water, and you lose an ounce of water a day, and you wait five, six years, or five or six days, and you put another ounce in there, you haven't gained anything, you've lost, and that's why we have to raise the sewer rates. And same thing for the natural gas, the availability charge, we have an ordinance for that also will go up on, take effect in June, with the June bill. Got updates from the departments, Mr. Sheldon said that his department's had two power outages, one street light, one miscellaneous, one new service, one net metering, and one meter test from March of February. The highlights include they changed out one red tag pole, they assisted the park department in cutting some new trails through Ruby Creek, preparation work was done for the extension of power lines to some of the subdivisions, B and N started clearing the rightways again, they assisted the street department in reopening the RV park after the flood, now, single-phase reclosures did not save any power outage, but it did save time on one. Mr. Sheldon presented to committee with the monthly reliability report, and an elected department strategic plan for 2022, and a scorecard to review. Water and sewer department, Mr. Eldery said his department had nine water work orders, installed eight new services, one service line repaired, replaced three meters, flushed out a hydrant, and a four, four-inch main broke that they had to repair on sandings. They also had three sewer work orders, jetted lines, replaced the pump on the Summit Lift Station, replaced a motor at well number three, and saw two hundred feet of four-inch main line on Alpine. Natural gas department, Mr. Doyle gave us a report from the natural gas department, David told us they walked a line every spring to check for catho, cathodic?
Cathodic.
Cathodic protection, and everything that came back looking good, they installed several connections and responded to a natural gas line that was hit. The department has received high ratings from the annual routine inspections. Mr. Doyle complimented our city workers on how... Mr. Doyle complimented our city workers on how hard they worked. And I think the committee also passed that off. There was need for a closed session. We went to close at four fourteen. It came out at four fifty-nine. Next schedule, meeting April fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Questions for Mr. Conley. We do have a proposed ordinance, Bill twenty twenty-two dash zero five. Reading please.
An ordinance authorizing an extension on utility bill due dates for Pulaski County, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing an extension on utility bill due dates for Pulaski County, fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Rice, vote second. Mr. Wilson. Discussion?
This is giving special treatment to the county commission because they can't do their budget to pay their bill in January. So they're potentially, I guess it's a yearly thing, it's been going on, we don't know how long. Every January, they're delinquent in their bill.
Ed, after December fifteenth, they can't pay any bills until they get the new budget in place, which normally isn't done until the first part of January. So there's like two to three weeks.
Let me finish on that. But that's the problem. They don't want to pay the late charges. So this is going to be special treatment for the county, allowing them to be delinquent in January and not be delinquent until the fifteenth of February. And it's for the commission. When they write their budget for this year, they could put in at least an estimated amount. I would assume their bills run pretty good for money.
You know, that was my thought, too, that maybe I ought to work with the county to see if they can figure out a way that, because if we waive their delay fees, who's the next one to come up to the trough and say, hey, wait mine, you did the county's?
That is my objection, too, is we're treating the county, we're giving them special treatment.
I think that's a step we ought to make as a city, is to get with the county and see if there's any way we can alleviate this because it's not that we're out to get late fees, but that's a pretty substantial sum that we have to waive. You know, we have to be good stewards for money, and if we're waiving it away, that's another question that we ought to see, how we can possibly resolve that.
So when we talk about being good stewards of money, the county's money, as well as the city's money, although we don't represent the county, a lot of the people are the same people that are paying the, so are we to say over thirty days that we should charge citizens of the county extra money? Or should we work with the county? I mean, I guess there's politics to be played or whatever, but when you're talking about people's money, I don't care if it's my money or Sean's money. I don't want to waste it on somebody's late fee somewhere. So when we talk about alleviating the problem, the county came to us with a way to alleviate the problem and not cost people extra money. And it's as easy as us saying, yeah, don't make your people pay extra money over thirty days.
How often is the county late on their utility payment otherwise?
Every year.
Just this time. I mean, the rest of the year, they're not late. So they're not in habitual.
Most of us have sat on the city's finance committee or been there. Now, if we owed Security Bank or whoever money at a certain time, and we went to them and we say, hey, our budget, because it goes through all these different committees, we all know how it works, our budget isn't planned out the way that it should be. Give us some time to fix it thirty days. And if they said, no, we're going to charge you 3% interest on money that you don't have, and he was already here talking to us about money he doesn't have.
Yeah.
And then we're going to go, now it's done. You know, I think it's, it's not costing people in the city extra money, but it's going to cost people in the county extra money.
Yeah, I agree. I thought we came to a consensus that this was like a no-brainer. For me, it was like we're just working together with the community. That's all it is. So it's not, I don't look at it as a special consideration. I don't look at it as somebody different. I just look at it as working together as a community. So that's why I vote yes.
I think there's a citizen that wants to talk. I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Please, and give us your name and address.
Stand up on your tippy-toe.
Hi, my name is Arina Brown. I reside in Ward One Three Oh Five Skyline Drive in Waynesville. My concern with the extended dates for the county, the city residents are not allowed to go past thirty days on their bills with or without an extra charge. So if we're doing it for the county, why can't we do it for the city residents? I'm getting electric bills that are six, seven hundred dollars for a fourteen hundred square foot house. And I am a single parent. So can I afford seven hundred dollars a month in the winter time? No. But I have to pay it within thirty days. So I have to choose whether I'm going to buy food or pay my car insurance or something else in order to pay my electric bill. Because if I don't pay it, it will be cut off. So that is my concern. If we're giving the county more than thirty days, why can't we give the city residents more than thirty days?
Do they, so can I answer that? We do.
I went last month asking for an extension. I was told I had to pay it by the fourteenth. I said, well, I don't get paid until the seventeenth.
But that bill was due the previous month on the fifteenth.
Correct. So it's thirty days.
And you wanted to-
Extend it for two more days.
The next month on the fourteenth. And the reason we didn't go past the fifteenth was because you were going to get a penalty again on the whole portion. So we didn't want you to get more penalties on, you know, it was going to cost you more money. And that's why we didn't want to go past the fifteenth again.
I mean, I understand the extra penalty, but if I have to choose between getting gas for my car or buying food and paying my electric bill, it's only in the winter time. In the summertime, my electric is so low. So it's only in the wintertime.
But we were only looking-
The level pay, the level pay system would probably help you out.
But you can't be late more than three times in a year to be on the level pay.
And we have a one-time penalty adjustment in place at the city. We also have a pay agreements available to citizens.
And that's what she's talking about, is the pay agreement. And we extended it for the disconnect date was probably around the sixth or seventh. So we extended her to the fourteenth. Already, this bill was due the previous month on the fifteenth. So her past due came in the mail and the due, like say the disconnect date might have been the sixth or the seventh. Well, she came in before that time and got a pay agreement and extended it to like the fourteenth, which is the latest we can do. We will do the fifteenth. That is the due date of the next bill. The bill she's doing a pay agreement on was a bill that was due the previous month. We don't like to go past the fifteenth because then they're past due on both bills. And then you get a bigger penalty. We only do that because we try to save the customer money. We don't like for them to go into bigger debt because then you're just getting further behind. And that's the only reason why we don't do that.
You know, I can see your point. You know, if we do it for the county, why can't we do it for you or anybody else in here?
The ones that pay city taxes. Correct.
And I understand Sean's part, part two. We try to deal with our partners in the county, but you start making exceptions here. You got to make exceptions there, and it just gets to be a big nightmare.
I'm not saying don't give the county an extension because if I lived in the county, you know, just because whatever happened, they couldn't pay the electric bill, now as a resident of the county, I will be cut off. So I'm not saying don't give things-
And I understand that, but we're talking about giving the county the same thing that we give people within the cities, thirty days.
Well, we're doing the courthouse is the only thing we're talking about, not citizens of the county. It's just the courthouse because they don't have-
Yeah, but we're doing with the county the same thing we already do with the citizens. We give the citizens thirty days, but we're telling the county, pay on time or we're giving you fees. We don't even give them thirty days right now. What we're saying right now is we're going to give them thirty days.
That's right.
So we're not doing anything for the county that we don't-
We're just telling them this one month, we're giving them the thirty days, not the rest of the time because they have to pay when it's due.
And with that said, I get, I mean, if it's Rob Rice's business, when it was in the city of Waynesville, if they were late thirty days, they didn't incur penalties. But the county, if they're late one day, they incur penalties. We don't give them thirty days. What we're saying right now is we give them thirty days, just like everybody else. We're not making any exceptions. We're not making anything else. It's just because it was the county, we never gave them the exception.
And we're only doing it for that one month.
In that one building. It's not, don't confuse this. We're not talking county residents. We're talking Pulaski County Courthouse.
Courthouse building.
Correct.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
Is your house electric heat?
Yes.
Do you know about the American Recovery Plan money that we have available, up to two thousand dollars to help with insulation or windows or doors? They'll cut down your bills?
So somebody gave me the information, but I misplaced it.
Talk to the ladies at the office and they will replace it.
And also, Missouri has a plan to assist in a situation like that where you're having difficulty with utilities, actually with rent and mortgages.
I make too much. That's what they say. I make too much money. So I can't get assistance through Mogo or anything.
That recovery plan may be able to help you.
And the safer is for renters only.
And what?
It's a safer program that helps pay your rent, but it's for renters only, not owners.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I still like Ed's idea. We maybe need to work with the county because if they know that they're going to be late every January, that something should be worked out that they could budget for it, that we're going to be owing five hundred dollars, five thousand, whatever the case may be. They know that in January they will be, if they can't pay it, they ought to budget in their budget that December will have that extra money to cover that electrical expense.
And one thing they're kind of up against, and Bill was kind of alluding to it, to approve their budget is more than just them meeting. An approved county budget is a budget that is approved, actually worked on and approved by the commissioners, and then it is set to the public for a period of like ten days, fifteen days. So, and this is all in statute. So best case scenario, you're off, say you're off, you know, New Year's Day. So you get there the second, and you approve it the second day of January. And then you wait your required ten days. You could be, you know, you're at the twelfth at the best before. So they have some timing mechanisms in that statute that is beyond their control. And I actually called several other county seats and spoke with them about their relationship with the city and what that looked like. And the cleanest version that we seen was to, they all had, kind of like we do, we have a one-time penalty adjustment in place, which we could do annually, one time annually. But the cleanest that I seen was basically an ordinance providing, this is the only time that they were late in those cities. And those cities recognized that, and they said, let's put an ordinance together allowing them to pay by this date in February. And they seemed to get along well with that. And that removed anybody having to maybe step outside of, you know, and waive those fees.
I've got a question. Since they have the Justice Center now, that would fall under the same thing as courthouse.
You're right. That's all.
The bill is a lot bigger than what it used to be.
You have several. There's separate bills. There's four or five of them.
Right. It all comes out of the county commission and court.
Yes, you're right. Yes, yes.
And I think they're still kind of collecting data on the jail, you know. It's, they don't know how to estimate because we talked about maybe doing a level pay or something to maybe try to plan ahead, you know, to get that building. But with the new building and stuff, there was just, the unknowns were too variable.
Is this going to be continuing? Every January, we don't have many penalties?
So every January, what we do is we extend the payment date of the courthouse to February first.
Every year?
Right.
Forever?
Right. So you don't have to cross this again. This will take care of it.
Unless we're lucky enough for the statute to change, we can come back and do it.
And you would revisit it if the statute changed, basically eliminating that timeframe of the ten waiting days for public comment.
So we're talking about waiving it from January first to February first, right?
So it's, you know, we're going like utility bills in the city do the fifteenth each month, and we're going to the first of February on the January bill only. That is it. I get to-
For every year, forever now, every year, two thousand three, two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six? Unless we make a change or negotiate with the county.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
No.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Barnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Economic Development, Governmental Affairs. Mr. Rice?
Yes. The meeting was called to work at five P M. There were no citizens' comments. The meeting's were approved for February's meeting. The City Minister, John Doyle, updated us on the committee, or updated the committee on the businesses, the business spotlight of the month. O T C would have been March. Medical Plaza is coming in next month. I think there's L M C convenience stores coming down the road, too. The special events, we talked about the upcoming events. Those events include Big Bam in June and a new festival in September called Route sixty-six Hogs and Frogs Fest. And other business, Mr. Doyle advised the committee that the economic development coordinator, Doug Potts, had secured an outside advertising grant for Mo Dot. He did it pretty quickly. The city will use the permit to construct signage next to the Medical Plaza and will advertise events and other happenings in the city. The sign will be a V-shaped with both sides measuring about ten to twenty feet.
Ten by-
Ten by twenty. Okay. Ten by twenty feet. It was a short meeting. Mr. Potts was on assignment away. So having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at five thirty-two P M. The next meeting is scheduled for April fifth at five P M.
Any questions for Councilman Rice?
Thank you.
Roads and Grounds. Councilman Barnum?
Roads and Grounds met on March third at five P M. Meeting was called to work. There was no citizens' comments. The meeting minutes from the February fifteenth meeting was approved. Our first business order was Mr. Paul Silas from the Moe Twelve Hall Telecom location on Bearin Lane. Gave us a little presentation and visited with him about what they want to do with the cell tower, which will be helped with earlier tonight if the sun comes. We moved on to project updates. Traffic count was mentioned in the previous month. In fact, I brought it up and asked if we had one so we could do a survey of the traffic in our different streets. Mr. Doyle has found out that, yes, we do have it. It's on the speed tracker. There's a way that can operate. So we'll look into that in future use then. We discussed repairing cracks around the courthouse square, especially on the backside there on the North Street area by the post office and up front of articles. Pretty good-sized cracks. And Mr. Chapman was going to look it over and see about when they could get the maintenance done on it to repair those. The street department updates. Mr. Chapman stated how they had been doing the snow plow, and hopefully that's the last until later in this year. And I hope we were done with the snow.
You want to bet on that?
Ah, no. Don't have that deep pockets anymore. He talked about working on Alpine Street where they finished up on Alice Road until springtime when Willard is available and they can do the asphalting. They did one utility patch, fixed the water issue on Michael Ford, built in bottles and some street sweeping. In our other business, Mr. Doyle stated that Jason will be working on a list of gravel rubbers for the city to bring back to the community. And I did receive mine on the iPad. We entered into a closed session at five twenty-two. We came out at five forty-eight. Since there was no other business, we adjourned. The next meeting was April seventh at five P M. Everybody's welcome.
Any questions for Councilman Farnum? Police Committee, Councilman Wilson.
All right, Emergency Service, uh, we met on, um, March tenth at, uh, three thirty, there were no citizens' comments, we did have a quorum, the, the minutes were accepted as published, um, some of the updates we received for grants, um, the police department received two grants to, that'll be utilized, um, there is a hazardous moving violation grant that's, that's a little over fourteen thousand that'll be used, and the impaired driving enforcement grant, um, a little over eighteen thousand. Uh, the police department updates, some good news is we had a generous donation of some used computers that was given, and the donor wishes to remain anonymous, um, and these are desktop computers, and, um, there was enough for every officer, so that was an awesome thing that, um, that citizen did, so thank you. Also, with the animal shelter vehicle leasing purchase, it's, uh, it's planned to lease a vehicle, um, the, the proposed vehicle was presented to the committee, and the price is between sixty to seventy thousand dollars, um, they plan on lining the bed of the, the vehicle to put cages in to carry animals, um, and, and right now, that was the proposed plan, was to, to do the lease, because of the warranty benefits. Other business, the American Legion Auxiliary, Poppy set up, um, around the square is going to be, uh, May fourteenth, um, or May twenty-first, um, the American Legion has selected these days because they weren't going to be able to be there on the, the normal times during Memorial Day, um, one of the proposed days is the fourteenth of May, um, as the weekend for the setup, so. Also, we have, um, I guess we can get some more updated information about, from Mr. Doyle about the, uh, promotions, um, here is saying that, uh, March seventeenth was, was going to be a proposed date, but I guess there were some updates to that.
Yes, there were some updates to the, uh, so the promotions are still, uh, they are in full effect, and have been, um, have been for a while, we are, uh, we are waiting for badges from our policemen, and, um, I don't want to downplay in any manner the achievement that these gentlemen have, um, you know, been recognized for, uh, I will go through now, uh, it's in my report, but Sergeant Mark Piles was promoted to Lieutenant, Corporal Josh Hazel was promoted to Sergeant, Patrolman Kyle Proff was promoted to Corporal, Patrolman Michael Roos was promoted to Corporal. We are waiting on these badges, we have been told they probably or will most likely be here by next, um, uh, council meeting, and we are looking forward to a penning ceremony of the council.
Big turnout.
Yeah, uh, I believe they will bring their families, uh, I, I hope they do, and then other promotions within the department consist of Patrolman One Brian Moore promoted to a Patrolman Two, Patrolman One Corey Hoard promoted to Patrolman Two, Patrolman One Greg Snyder was promoted to a Patrolman Two, and Patrolman One Brad Halterman was also promoted to a Patrolman Three. Again, quite an accomplishment, we had hoped that they would be here by this council meeting, the, uh, badges and the penning ceremony, these promotions are in full effect, but, um, we want to kind of make them official and recognize them as, as a council, as a group, as a community.
So, um, the next time that we have our, our meeting, we just want to have, uh, max support if we could to support our, those that support us and serve us in our community. There was no need for a closed session, having no further business, the, the meeting was adjourned at, uh, three forty-eight P M., uh, next meeting is scheduled for April fourteenth, um, at three thirty, right here, um, you can come and join us and, and share some of your concerns, if you have some, or kudos, if you want to get those out, I have nothing else.
Any other questions for Councilman Wilson? John, I got two questions, if you explain, what is the difference between hazardous moving violation and impaired driving enforcement? I know the chief's gone, he could probably answer that a little better than you, but...
Yeah, for sure he can, so, uh, hazardous moving violation is something more of a, uh, driving technicality, so we're looking at, you know...
Improper turns.
Improper turns, speeding, passing in the center lane, you know, things like that, and then the impaired driving, obviously, we're looking, uh, the, these are probably more commonly known as the D W I saturation or things like that.
And probably cell phone talking, you know, that's impaired driving right there.
Yeah, really it is, it's, it's, uh, that's, that's unfortunate.
Explain again the advantage of a lease versus buying this, uh, uh, vehicle outright.
So on a vehicle that gets, um, some hard use, and, and probably, when I say that, keep in mind, you, you look at the age of the vehicles in our fleet, and you're going to see some older vehicles in the city's fleet and departments, and these departments, you know, the, they work in these trucks, but when they show up, typically this vehicle they get out of, and they will man a piece of equipment or start putting together pipes, so it's basically just trans, transportation from their, uh, office or location that they show up to the job site. Other vehicles like the, um, um, animal shelter and, and police vehicles, these are offices, these are mobile offices, and these things are used daily for that, and their, their use is much, uh, you know, i- is much greater, their mileage is much greater, so these vehicles tend to wear out sooner, and when you evaluate a, uh, ownership versus a lease, um, the warranty is something definitely you're looking at in these situations, so when, in our budget, we look at, you know, tires and, and op, uh, maintenance on a, on a vehicle, those kind of will go away in a lease program, because this vehicle is leased, it is under warranty throughout the life of the vehicle as you own it, and if you choose to trade it in, and, um, as we had discussed last year a little bit, in some of the finance meetings, and, and really in police, we're looking at the, the option to lease a fleet, and with a used car mar, market that is high, or has been really extremely high over the past probably five to seven years, that, that lease purchase or that lease program's been very high, as these vehicles have been leased early, and then put back into the market, maybe at a higher rate than what you actually have got them for, and, and over years, it has shown benefit to municipalities and others to go that direction.
Okay, thank you. Finance Human Resources Committee, Councilman Davis.
Uh, the meeting was held on March tenth, uh, at five o'clock, um, the committee reviewed the, the committee approved the minutes, and then approved the bills, the outstanding bills, committee reviewed the, uh, cash flow reports, bank account statuses, the city's completed sixteen point six percent of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, uh, and their expenses are thirteen percent, and revenues are twenty-three percent, city bank accounts have a total of , uh, seven million eighty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars in restricted and unrestricted funds, uh, there's several large debt payments, uh, in March from the city, those are going to be your insurance payments, your quarterly tax, and stuff like that. Committee also forwarded a proposed resolution, uh, establishing parameters to lease a, uh, animal control van, we, we talked about it also, uh, obviously, it's got to be put out for bids so we can get the best price, uh, it'll be an ordinance authorizing that. Uh, Mr. Doyle discussed the high inflation in gasoline prices, and how they negatively, uh, impact city employees, usually those that they're entering positions and stuff. Uh, we talked about, um, proposing a plan that would offer employees to, uh, work from home when gas prices, uh, go up, take city vehicles home, obviously within parameters, uh, obviously, we don't need anybody dropping the Lebanon or anything like that, uh, and allowing, once gas went over four twenty-five, maybe to sup, start supplementing some of the lower grade, wage grade employees in the city, of those that live farther, would obviously be into the plan first, it's, it's really, I, I believe it, what, what did it cost the city a year?
We were looking at, um, roughly two thousand dollars a pay period, so roughly, you know, fifty thousand a year, if everybody, uh, took, um, if everybody took, uh, advantage of the programs, and...
But that does go up incrementally, depending on, you know, if the gas goes over four twenty-five, and it comes back down, it stops, it, it doesn't keep going, uh, so it's incremental.
To the point where some of us don't even qualify.
Some, some people don't even qualify, I'm sure. Like John, I'm pretty sure he never qualifies.
You make them mad, if one gets it, everybody wants it, and you got problems.
Probably. The committee, uh, also, uh, was in agreement to take out the coffee break policy, the coffee break policy had been, uh, looked at in years, it basically said, your coffee break can be there between this time and this time, uh, I don't think anybody actually takes a physical coffee break anymore, so we talked about removing that. Committee asked the city clerk to update an ordinance number seven thirty-eight for prohibited smoking within fifty feet of a city building, uh, on, on the minutes, it says, "City property," uh, I believe it's actually the city building, I don't think we need them out in the middle of, uh, Route sixty-six smoking cigarettes and stuff, but it's fifty feet from the city property and in city equipment and vehicles, uh, that goes with the, if we're going to start looking at leasing vehicles or reselling vehicles, uh, smoking in a vehicle takes down the resale value of a vehicle, um, and that would be sent to the city council for final approval. K P M, CPAs, and advisors will be on-site fourteen through eighteen March to begin annual audit, so that means, um, Amber will be really busy, and she's actually already busy, uh, with that. Committee went into closed session, uh, we returned back into open session, uh, we had talked about the property known as the River Property, I believe is the name of it, uh, the part just outside of Ruben, uh, there is a real estate agreement out there, uh, for, to purchase the property, uh, we wanted to bring that to the city council to approve negotiations of purchasing the property, if the purchase of property comes in bail. The committee adjourned at six P M., the next meeting will be the fourteenth of April at five, I would love to have people in there to talk about stuff.
Smoking.
Yeah, probably not smoking, you remember.
Any other questions for Mr. Davis?
Who established the fifty-foot from the building on the smoking?
I think the fifty-foot is a federal guideline.
You know, when you go to vote, they have no electioneering allowed twenty-five feet from the entrance, don't you think twenty-five feet would be sufficient to, uh, any entrance to a building?
I, I think it wouldn't be sufficient, but I do think there's federal statute or something that says government buildings, and I would understand that they're municipality buildings or government buildings.
I don't, I don't really remember the fifty-foot segment, and I think that is a little much.
If you're going to restrict it...
You're standing out in the middle of the highway.
Well, if you're going to restrict it fifty feet, Dad, you got employees to smoke, you better have a covered place for those employees.
And we, and we also talked about that, too.
You know, and, and you guys said you're doing away with the coffee break, well, if they work eight hours a day, they're allowed a fifteen-minute break, a thirty minutes lunch, a fifteen-minute half-day break.
You, you would have to read the policy, I, I, I know we want to talk and argue about it right now, but the policy was well outdated.
Well, I don't doubt that, a lot of the, the city ordinance is...
I, I mean, the breaks are still in there, just where it says specific coffee break, it's not in.
Yeah. So just leaving the work of coffee should be, be fine.
I mean, that's, that's basically what we did, it said, you are authorized two fifteen-minute specified coffee breaks in the mail.
Probably nineteen forty.
Uh, I want to say it was eighty-five, maybe, eighty-six, uh, but yeah. The fifty feet...
See alignment coming down off the pole, it's hunting break time!
Uh, so, uh, the, the fifty feet, uh, we said the fifty feet, because, uh, I work for the government, you can't smoke any, any...
You're federal, though.
Yeah, I, I am federal, fifty, I want it twenty-five feet, that's fine, but...
How about a designated smoking area?
Designated smoking area would also be good, too, uh, the designated smoking area, we did talk about putting further than fifty feet, because when you talk about fifty feet outside the door, you're, you're talking about the second row of parking in the parking lot, I don't think they're going to stand out in the parking lot and smoke it.
Well, I think what Bill's kidnapped, too, is like at the school, East School, right by the mayor's house, you can't smoke on school property, so when it's parent-teacher night, they're standing out on the road.
It's my property, it's my cigarette, it's my property.
Yeah, in the right, and you can't see...
And that's the reason I said it's not city property, it's the city building.
Right.
Uh, we, we had planned on, uh, doing a smoking area, there's actually our radio designated smoking area, it's right outside the door, uh, just talked about where we might put it, cover it somewhere.
We made a rule last year, I think it was about the park with tobacco use, that was the last year when we did that.
These sports events, yeah.
I mean, the fifty-foot is a rude eventuring number, if we put twenty-five feet on there, and we put a designated smoking area on the other side of the parking lot, that's going to be more than fifty feet away.
Well, I, I just personally think twenty-five feet away from any entrance to the building would be spiced, because that way it's not bothering people coming and going.
Bill, you can certainly make a suggestion to slightly amend this or this for that, that slight change, if the council would approve that. Counselor.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Any other questions? Amber Bock? Wake up. We have a, we have a special thing to hand her, I just give her this one here.
Um, she's actually already got, we were just wanted to recognize her for what her hard work is, uh, how much hard work did she put into that?
She's got another badge to wear. Certified Lager's Administrator, congratulations.
I like a good lager.
Me, too. She can pour a good one, no, but, I mean, really, she, she spent several months, a lot of hours online, a lot of testing and everything, to get this recognition from lagers, which is a big asset to the city and its employees, we've never had an administrator before, so she helps a lot of us understand our retirement a little bit better, because most of us just knew we had one, and that was not it, so.
All right, proposed resolution, zero four dash two-two, reading please.
A resolution authorizing the city of Waynesville to accept or reject bid proposals for the lease purchase of an animal control vehicle fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And Mr. Rice seconded, discussion, I think we already discussed it, vote?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash zero six, reading please.
First reading, an ordinance amending chapter two-ten of the municipal code of the city of Waynesville regarding smoking on city property and within city vehicles fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending chapter two-ten of the municipal code of the city of Waynesville regarding smoking on city property and within city vehicles fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Mr. Davis?
That we approve the ordinance with the edit of fifty to twenty-five feet.
Fifteen?
Fifty, fifty to twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Fifty.
Or twenty-five, put it in there.
No, no, it's fifty feet in here.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, okay, oh, I got one.
Mr. Davis made a motion, Mr. Connolly seconded, any further discussion? Vote, please.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash zero seven.
A fresh reading, an ordinance amending the city of Waynesville's Employee Personnel Manual regarding the establishment of the Employee Emergency Benefit Program, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending the city of Waynesville's Employee Personnel Manual regarding the establishment of the Employee Emergency Benefit Program, fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Connolly?
Second.
Second, Mr. Davis, I mean, Mr. Wilson, any discussion on this? Well, let's see here. Vote, please.
Councilman Farnum?
No.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Actually, I did have a couple of questions. I kinda slipped out of my, I got going too fast here. The city manager can, can have these programs, but we ought to look at the duties of the council and the mayor. And if those of you who wanna have to do a little reading some night, look up Pearson versus City of Washington. There's a couple of things on here, and one of them, I think was brought up earlier, a little discrimination. Yes, we're gonna have the lower-paid employees receive these benefits. You know, that creates a little ill will, too, when you have some people working probably as hard as not harder, and they're kinda left out of the program. So that's kind of a disappointment there. And on the last page, D, on term, it states until the city administrator deems it appropriate to return to normal operating procedures. Again, I want council to pull that Pearson versus City of Washington up, and look, this is diluting the power of the mayor and the city council when we have the city administrator making all decisions. It basically leaves the council and the mayor out of this. So that's what I'm gonna bring up. All right, vote, please.
We've already had a note.
All right, already voted, okay.
But I will tell you, the reason why we put D in for that term is in the off chance that you get gas prices at five fifty, and they happen to drop to four seventy-five, and we just had a council meeting. That enables city administrator to mix the program without having to wait an additional month for the next council meeting. That's the only reason why we put that one.
Well, that, that may be fine, but let's have the council sometime read Pearson versus City of Washington.
If, if he, if the city administrator decides or might follow the ordinance and if gas prices drop to below four twenty-five, and he makes the decision that, okay, we're below four twenty-five, it's not only active. The council, the council can still override him. But if they drop the gas prices this week, you don't wait a month to make the action?
We'd be losing financial. So we're going on his discretion. We can always vote.
To undo that.
To undo his, all we're saying is he has the discretion to make that without, without...
But then, the first, the way this ordinance is written, you have stages. It's not like if it goes to four twenty-six, John says something. It goes to four thirty, John says something. Come back at four twenty-five, John says something. The ordinance should already specify that this isn't something that has to wait till the next city council. This is something that should be built into the ordinance that if it goes here, this is what we do. If it goes down here, this is what we do.
That's what D is.
No, that's allowing John to make that decision.
Right.
That should be put into the ordinance.
But the municipal.
Can you imagine how long that ordinance would be?
That's that authority.
Yeah, we, we're just giving him the authority.
Then why did I hire him if I didn't want him to make decisions?
Right. If we have to make all decisions, why do we have a city administrator?
All right, let's go back. You guys get a chance to read Pearson versus City of Washington. All right, proposed ordinance, twenty oh-two dash zero eight. Reading, please.
First reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or the city administrator to execute documents for the purchase of certain property located within the city limits of the city of Waynesville fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or the city administrator to execute documents for the purchase of certain property located within the city limits of the city of Waynesville fixing an effective date.
Make motion.
Motion.
Mr. Mr. Farnum makes a motion ahead. Do you wanna second that?
Yeah.
All right.
Good work.
Discussion?
John, this is the property we've talked about.
Yes, sir. This is the one located on Highway seventeen.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is it the corner, the corner one, or?
Yes, it's kinda maybe just past Booker Road on the Route Two side, the one we kinda discussed a few times.
Yeah.
Went around, that's it.
Any discussion?
Do we have a firm price on it?
We do. We have a, you know, a solid price, and it's in there. Our offer is the same. We've come up against maybe some timing issues, but our price is solid. It, it doesn't change.
So we can make, we can enter to agreement even though the property's still unproven? And how long does the ordinance gonna stay? If they decide that Jackman decide, they're not gonna do it. I guess then this, this disappears?
Our, yes, our ordinance is actually tied to our contract, which extends us out into the summer. They, they expect to have this cleaned up by June, July. I don't think the owners actually knew it was not correct until they decided to sell the property, and then they figured out that it hadn't been, you know, properly. Yeah, so I think it was a surprise, just as much a surprise to them maybe as it was to us.
Okay. Any other discussion? Vote, please.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board. John?
So, uh, the meeting was, uh, held February twenty-second, called the order at three, three o'clock P M. Minutes were approved from the January twenty-fifth meeting. The budget reflected sixteen percent of the year. Revenues, um, was tracking at fourteen percent with expenses tracking at thirteen percent. Revenues from our fuel cells were exceeding our budget models, so that's really good news. My guy, our airport operations manager, obviously stated that fuel cells were up. We, uh, he, he just had received a fuel trailer and had mounted the fuel trucks for ground equipment required by the E A S provider. Sky West was, was there and provided an update. They were working through, at that time, some staffing challenges, and they had offered combined services amongst some of their E A S cities, including us, Waynesville, St. Robert, Fort Leonard Wood, and T B N Airport. We were actually, um, going to experience, and I say going to, I'll explain that a little later as, as some other things have transpired that are important and have come out. We were going to have a lay, layover at Decatur, Illinois, and we were kinda packaged with them prior to going to Chicago O'Hare. We, I, I actually asked how long the, the layover would be, and they, they expressed about thirty to thirty-five minutes. We provided a punch list from the, for F A A items on the part one thirty-nine A C M manual. The T B N camp provisions, we've actually been working very hard on the terminal area master plan, site approval for the airport meeting. We had set that at February twenty-third, and a follow-up meeting was also set for March third. Burns McDonald was there. They, they had also discussed the terminal area master plan and the, where they were in the design of that and the layout of that. Air Services Grant Program Update was discussed, and we were unable to issue, unable to receive any grants on fiscal year twenty-three. S O P marketing report showed, you know, a, a little bit of an uptick in our, I guess, marketing plan in both Google, Facebook, things like that. And then with no further business, we adjourned at three-thirty. The next meeting was scheduled for March twenty-second at three P M. That meeting has already happened. I had spoke to you guys individually after that meeting. The T B N Airport had received a ninety-day notice from Sky West for termination of the Central Air Service to the airfield. This, uh, the reasoning for, given for this termination notice was a pilot staffing challenge across the airline industry. Fort Leonard Wood, along with twenty-nine other cities, E A S cities, in which Sky West provided service for, had received this notice. And, um, that kind of requires us to do something at the airport again.
Is the Secretary of Transportation at the federal level kinda put the brakes on them from dropping out?
Hmm, kind of. So the kind of part is they are gonna be dropping out. The kind of part is the ninety days may not be a drop-dead deadline.
Right. You have to extend it out until...
They're not going to allow any city to go unserviced until a replacement provider is found, okay? So with that being said, uh, the reason I continue to go beyond the meeting is I think your next ordinance coming out of airport is an ordinance authorizing the mayor or city administrator to basically enter into a, a contract with Valer Aviation. And Valer, Valer Aviation, there's a guy, a gentleman at Valer Aviation named Mike Mooney, whom the city has used multiple times, every time that I, I'm aware of, to solicit and go through the rebidding of E A S service or A E A S service at Fort Leonard Wood. Again, the previous, we, we bid this in September. We've made it to, you know, March, and now it looks like, most likely June, by the time the ninety days is up. So, uh, but we will be going through a rebid process for that service on Fort Wood. I don't know what that looks like yet. I know that it has already started as these airlines have been kinda calling, contacting. We've been hearing some things from them. Some really exciting news is the T B N, which is, uh, just got approved for nine million dollars federally to be spent on the temp or terminal area master plan and the construction of a new terminal at the airport. And this, uh, this went through, it was, uh, great work by, you know, uh, the city of Waynesville, the city of St. Robert, S O P, Fort Wood. Everybody was pulling in the same direction on this, and it, it was approved through Senator Blunt's office, and those funds are in the budget. So, um, that, that is great news. That's exciting news. Uh, that's, that's nine million of, uh, estimated twelve-million-dollar terminal at the airport.
So we lost the state money, though? We lost the state money?
I have not got a hundred percent confirmation on that.
And how much was that, was that two eight?
Three million.
Three million. And you say you're already doing the project to try to get a replacement airline, and we don't have to wait till they close down? If we can get something in, and it's negotiable between the new person who's approved, hopefully approved, and Sky West, could they terminate earlier if the new one could come in?
I, I believe that is still, uh, an option for them. So say things go really well for, for our airport and, and negotiations go well, and F A A approves, uh, the selected provider, yeah, I, I believe Sky West could check out earlier than ninety days. The, uh, the concerning part are some of the details that we're kinda working through is keep in mind there's twenty-nine other cities on that list, and that competition is, uh, it, it'll be fierce. That's, that's pretty, pretty steep competition in those twenty-nine cities.
Thank you, John. Any questions? All right. Proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash zero nine. Reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a consulting services agreement between the Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Committee and Valer Aviation Incorporated fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a consulting services agreement between the Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Committee and Valer Aviation Incorporated fixing an effective date.
I have a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Conley? Go have a second. Mr. Davis? I think we discussed it pretty good. Anything else you wanna add or anything that the council would like to ask?
And I, I would like to add, if you read through the agreement and you see the numbers, keep in mind those numbers are, are split between our partners at St. Robert. So, so if you see, you know, eighteen thousand, that's nine thousand us, nine thousand them, okay? That's, it, it is an unbudgeted expense. We didn't foresee this coming, but...
Right.
Right, it's very similar. It's contracts.
John, I've got a question for you then.
Yes, sir.
Can you build into the contract with the next company that if something like this that's happening with Sky West, if they leave before the scheduled time, that they pay a penalty back to the city?
I can ask. I tried to build into the contract, um...
If it was in with Sky West, at least we'd be reimbursed.
Yeah, I tried to build into the contract the last time that, you know, we would, um, one of our only revenue sources at, um, the airfield is to sell of fuel. And I wanted to put that in our contract, that our provider would utilize our fuel, but I, I was told I couldn't. But that's a good point, and I will, I will ask if we can put that into our agreement.
They gotta hire paid lawyers than we do. Uh, vote, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corin?
Passes. Other business. Proposed resolution, twenty-two dash zero five.
A resolution appointing certain members to the board of directors of the Central Ozark Utility Service Alliance, L L C, Co-U S A, fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Br, Mr. Wilson, second.
Second.
Mr. Rice? Any other discussion? John?
Just stay on the appointment. My, uh, I believe this one is actually for my position on the Co-U S A board. And it's Jerry as well?
No, me and Jack.
Oh, it's all of us? Okay, so it's Waynesville's, uh, representation on the Co-U S A board. And basically, it's, it's a time, uh, it's...
They've needed the renewal.
And we have to go through this to make sure it's in, um, you know, in the minutes, and then we pass that to the Co-U S A board so they can put it through their, their board as well. It's kind of a standard process.
I have a motion for this resolution.
We got it.
All right, let's go.
Councilman Corin? Councilman Conley? Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
City administrators, report.
So, um, I would like again to, um, start by recognizing our police department and their well-deserved promotions. It's in my reports, first thing I have. It's probably the, the, one of the things that, that I probably held highest as an achievement of a department. And, um, I've, I've watched it. It's actually been going on a little while. This is the first time, 'cause we thought we'd have these gentlemen here, but man, these guys are coming together as a team down there, and, and it shows they are taken to their role as leaders, and, and I'm proud of, of the decisions that were made to promote them and proud of the job they're doing. The next thing is Citizen of the Year, Sean Wilson. I, I don't wanna embarrass you or single you out, but what an accomplishment. My hat's off to you. Very nice, very proud of you, um, very good job. And then, so down to business with the utility rate increases. The syrup rate increase is a, is a real number. It is a rate increase, and, um, we are doing this over a three-year period to evaluate it, uh, in our budget and finance. I know that the rate studies provided by TOES tell us a number that we need to be at and give us a percent increase to reach or obtain that number, but our guys are the best in the business, and if we can do it more efficiently, and we find a way to do it more efficiently, as we evaluate this annually, we will, um, we will not go three years. We may have to go three years, but that is why we spread it out over time so we could evaluate that on a, on an annual basis and hopefully minimize the impact an increase like this would have. This increase is expected to take place, uh, in December, and you won't see it until your January bill, which is for your December utilities. Gonna discuss the natural gas. Natural gas is not a rate increase. This is actually an availability fee increase, and, um, we look at stepping that up in June. We think that, you know, doing it any sooner than that with the weather and the bet that Bill Farnum and Mayor Brown have with snow going on, um, natural gas can really be impacted by weather, cold weather, things like that. So, so by June, that, that market has leveled out, and these, uh, increase to the availability fee will, will not be as, as noticeable, uh, we hope. fee will, will not be as, as noticeable, we hope. Our city sanitation bid, Ed, Ed kinda hit on this, these bids are due by five PM on April fourth and will be reviewed April fifth at the utility meeting. I have some snow removal comments, as we haven't met, seemed like we scheduled about every Thursday off for like three weeks with all the snow, but I will tell you one department that did not take off and that was the people in, in our roads and street department. We actually drafted a couple other drivers during this time and, man, these guys did great work, probably the best I seen. There was never a moment, I called, it was amazing, I called at two in the morning, I called five in the morning, four in the morning, they'd answered their phone and they knew how the roads were, they knew the conditions, these guys worked hard and we did that, it seemed like a weekly ritual. Jason told me, he said, man, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss this four o'clock phone call when, when summer hits, so, but anyway, would like to discuss the NFC or the Fitness Court Grant, the, the city received the National Fitness Campaign Fitness Court. We are currently working through that, this is a new feature that will be in the Ruby Doo Park, it is, it is actually really an adult use feature, but I think kids will also get a lot of use out of it. It, it won't really be competing though with Little Hero's Playground as that tends to attract most of the youngsters, but this is, this is a kid at heart kinda, kinda feature and pretty excited about getting that going and receiving that grant as a city. The twenty-twenty-one audit went really well, so the dates that Cecil gave, that, those dates have come and gone and the auditors were here. I think I heard him say on the last day in our briefing that this was the first time that they were able to come in and finish the audit in three days and that is nothing more than the finance officer having most all of it in front of them prior to them showing up. We have went digital with a lot of the information, so they are able to receive it beforehand and review it. A lot of questions, had a lot of review, but at the end of the day, those questions had great answers, the review went well and, and our auditors were very, very pleased with what they seen and, you know, obviously we'll be working on the rough and then final draft of the audit. And would like to close with some upcoming events that we have. We got a fiftieth anniversary of Ruby Doo Park, June fourth, Big Bam is coming through town, June fifteenth, Cape State Cruisers, July twenty-third through the twenty-fourth, Old Settlers Day, July twenty-ninth through the thirty-first, and Hogs and Frogs Festival, September twenty-third through the twenty-fifth.
Other comments?
That's all I have.
Council comments? Let's start with Mr. Farin.
Well, I'm sitting here thinking, I saw that it was mentioned about Vietnam War veterans and what today's date means, and I'm trying to remember the story, I've been in age, I've lost the story, maybe one of you guys can tell me more about it, but that's kind of our, our heroes that didn't get the recognition that was so deserved. So if you know somebody that served in Vietnam, take a moment, say thanks to them, because they didn't get it like a lot of the other soldiers who I'm very proud of. But I know when my brother came back to Vietnam, he didn't come back to a welcoming committee or any bands or parades or anything and to this day, he doesn't like to discuss his, his year in Vietnam, so I can understand. With that, that's all I can say.
Mr. Davis?
I just wanna say thank you to the city, do Liberty's part, tell Liberty the happy anniversary, somebody has hadn't put up with him for thirty-six years and I thank her for talking to him, so I don't have to all the time.
Mr. Wilson?
Just a, a couple of things, one is just for the community, I know our kids are going back to the park, this last week I, I kinda rolled up on some kids that was playing on top of the pavilion, so just for the safety of the children and also for the protection of our, our equipment and the city, we need to make sure that we just kinda communicate to our children that, you know, the top of the pavilion is not a place to, to play around. So, just safety note. The other thing is, I wanna, even though this is a month in advance, to try to get this word out, but we have a local business in the city of Waynesville called Comic Hordes and they're giving away free comic books on the first Saturday in May, it's May seventh. So if you got children that's interested in comic books, take them to that organization, even before then, buy a couple and then go and get some free ones later, but it's, it's located over in the mall by McDonald's, so it's on that backside where Pam, the pet's place is, what's the name?
Rocky Top.
Rocky Top, all right, I don't get them all mixed up, but Rocky Top, so that's all I have.
Mr. Curtis?
My dad did two tours in Vietnam, the first time I didn't know what was involved, the second time I didn't know if Dad was gonna come home, he did come home, praise God, but he sat down with me when I was an older man and told me when the, the Iraqi war was going on, I wish I could've come back to that. Of course, my dad's past couple of years, but those veterans that did do Vietnam, we thank you for your service. Also, April fifth is election day, don't forget to go and do your duty, your, whatever it's called.
Duty diligence.
Thanks, do that.
Civic duty.
Civic duty, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Mr. Rice?
I just wanna congratulate Mr. Wilson, I mean, that is a huge award, Citizen of the Year. You deserve it too, Sean, you, you're busy, you've got people coming to you all the time wanting something and you always manage to help them one way or another. Appreciate serving on the board of the year, that was an honor.
Mr. Conley?
The ports on the end down there kinda sold my thunder, I had a thing all set, prepared to say, and it was gonna start out something like this, fifty-seven years ago, give or take, on a dark and dreary day, a bunch of us, including me, headed for a place called Vietnam. We went to a strange world, a world of rice paddies and jungles and patch huts, people that liked us, people that were nice, and little kids that would blow you up, and other people who were not so nice. When we came home, and I'm not a hero by the way, when we came home, we were treated, I don't know if you quite remember, we were spit on, we were called names, we were called baby killers, we were treated like dirt, basically. Not everyone did that, but that's what happened to us. So, a couple of years ago, they decided, wow, we've left them out, so they made the twenty-ninth of March a Vietnam Veteran Memorial Day. I didn't hear, maybe they did, but I didn't hear any national figure coming out today and saying anything about Vietnam veterans.
Would you have expected that?
Not really, I, no bands, no parades, just another, not even a Monday holiday. It's almost like a slap on the wrist, to be honest about it, but for all of the ones that went and especially the ones that didn't come back, we owe all of them a debt of gratitude that we could never repay.
Thank you.
I will stop at that.
It's hard to follow that. Thank everybody for their service. Thank you, Ed. You know, I'm, I think I'm probably the youngest one up here and, I mean, I've seen, I've seen some stuff, but I've not seen anything that you have seen and it touches me greatly that I get to sit next to you up here on city council and that I've gotten to know you so well. You're one of my favorite people, so, thank you, thank you for being here and thank you for speaking.
You made me cry.
My other words were for Sean, Citizen of the Year. I couldn't have picked a better one. You are amazing and if people in this community don't know who you are, shame on them because you're everywhere and you are always doing something for somebody that's helping the larger picture. And so, I am so honored to sit on city council with you as well and to call you my friend. So, congratulations on Citizen of the Year.
Sean, it goes without saying that you're in great company with the other citizens of the year, so you fit right in. I wanna ask Randy if he's been on the connect with the park board for fifty years?
Say what?
'Cause the park, the anniversary of Ruby Doo Parks is gonna be fifty years, have you been there that long with them? It just seems like it, doesn't it? I do wanna thank Randy for that, it's, it's nice to have somebody come back, he's been with the city for quite a while and retired and came back to volunteer and I think he said it's a good example for those of us out there who would like to assist the city in various ways. One other comment which I came up tonight, we ought to consider seeing to get a city attorney who attends the city council meetings to answer any questions we have. With that being said, enjoy the evening, it's gonna rain, hope I'm not down to Ruby Doo Park.